Thank you. Frank, will you do a roll call, please?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Allison, you're here. I thought you were still in the office.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
President.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
President.
Mr. Smurl?
Here. To begin our meeting this evening, everyone knows Norma Jeffries is in the back there. Norma, will you come up to the front here? We want to award you a proclamation. All council people, come down. You have to stand by me. Okay, we are ready. I will begin. Whereas the City Council of the City of Scranton is desirous honoring Norma Jeffries, one of nine children born to the late Doris and Solathah Sims. Norma is the wife of late Charles Jeffries, mother to sons Roger and Carter, and grandmother to Jasper and Jaden. And whereas Norma was born and raised in Scranton, educated in Scranton School District, and attended Lackawanna Business College. And whereas Norma worked at Samters and later at Bell Telephone. When she and Charles married, they moved to Philadelphia and New Jersey where Norma continued to work for the phone company and furthered her education at Arcadia University and Drexel University. And whereas after Charles passed away, Norma moved back to Scranton after a 36-year absence. And whereas Norma became renowned for her immediate community involvement, having chaired food drives, served as Secretary to Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority, member of the Shade Tree Commission, worked on organizing the Electric City Flower Show, regularly attended prison board meetings, and volunteers at the Lackawanna County Prison. And whereas Norma became a frequent citizen contributor at weekly Scranton City Council meetings where she pushed for street sign replacement. And whereas, Norma is a faithful member of the Grace Bible Church where she regularly attends Sunday services. And whereas, Norma, through her daily acts of kindness to her fellow man, has made our city a better place. And now therefore be it resolved that on Tuesday, October 14th of 2025, Scranton City Council wishes to congratulate Norma Jeffries for her daily acts of kindness and her community involvement.
Thank you.
Oh, this one be yours. So, we will... Counselor would like to give you a small token of our appreciation for all your work. I'll hold this for you.
Okay.
You gotta open it. Oh, yes. I will keep this here for you. It's fall wrapping paper, so...
Ms. Norma, thank you for everything that you have done for our community. I think we can see, hear, and feel that in this room tonight. We really appreciate you. I will not read all of this. Isaiah put together a novel about your life, and so we will send this with you, a proclamation from me as well. But, Council members, girl, great idea with this sign. We are proud to have almost 5,000 new signs, but you're pushing... There you go. There you go. But that's the most special one. We will miss you dearly. I know you need to go be with those beautiful grandbaby boys, but we will miss you here, so don't forget us, okay?
Thank you. You know, it's bittersweet leaving, and I've got two grandsons, Jasper and Jaden, and we do FaceTime like crazy, but there's nothing like being there in person and getting those hugs and the peeks into my room when I'm there. I'm not going to be living with them. I have my own place. I love them to death, but I have my own place. And I think back to the first time I came to council meeting, and I thought, oh dear, you know, what's this about? But it wasn't long before I wanted to know what town was it I was moving back to. You know, I was coming back to Scranton, but I didn't know anything about Scranton. So I figured the best way to learn is to get out there. And one of my prayers was that I would become involved and learn and meet new friends and people. And the Lord has answered that prayer because look at all the people here, you know? So I thank you all for coming. All the groups that I've been a part of are here, and I appreciate that. So, thank you.
Okay. We call the meeting to order, please. We call the meeting to order. Thank you. Dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, correspondence dated October 6th, 2025, from City Business Administration regarding licensing inspections and permits budget transfer. 3B, City of Scranton, 2024 financial audit completed September 29th, 2025, by Clifton Larson Allen LLP, and received from the Business Administration, October 2nd, 2025. 3C, single tax office city funds distributed comparison report for year-to-date October 10th, 2025, and year-to-year comparison report for October 17th, 2024, through October 10th, 2025.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
Just quickly, this past weekend was the 28th Steamtown Marathon. It's extremely successful. We had runners from all over the country, 1,035 registered. And the runners absolutely had a great experience, and that's thanks to all the volunteers from Forest City to Scranton, literally several thousand. But I particularly want to thank the Scranton Police Department, DPW, or City Administration, who helped out and allowed us to close down a few streets for a few hours to help make sure that the runners were safe. But everyone I spoke to absolutely had a great experience and loved being here in our city. So, I just want to thank everyone who was involved, and all the citizen volunteers as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anyone else? No? So, I have one. This one is for, "Join the Friends of Naog Park to Step Up for Naog on Sunday, October 19th, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Naog Park." This is a free community event. "Invites everyone to enjoy walk-through the park while supporting preservation enhancement of one of Scranton's most beloved landmarks. The day will feature live music, face and pumpkin painting for kids, food trucks, local vendors, all sponsored by generous local business and patrons. Proceeds and donations from the event will benefit ongoing efforts to maintain and improve the park for future generations. So, bring the whole family out for a day of fresh air, fall fun, community pride, all in support of Naog Park's lasting legacy."
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First, we have Joan Hoda-Wanis.
Joan Hoda-Wanis, Scranton. Today is October 4th. When will the draft budget for next year be released for public review?
On the 14th?
No, today is the 14th.
I'm sorry, October 14th. When will it be released, though, for public review?
I think about another week.
Another week?
Yeah, maybe, maybe.
And remind you, if possible, please send a copy to the public library. Unlike City Hall, the public library is always open, and people can get in there to look at the document. It's a little harder to get in here, kind of thing, although Frank does a wonderful job when you ask him for help. Okay, let's talk about the elephant in the room, this streetscape thing. And I understand that Part II will be continued next week. You remember when I did this study for the council where I went around to every of those pedestrian push-button crossings, and I noted which ones didn't work and all the little problems they had? I remember when they put in the current traffic system, what was it, 20, 25 years ago? And, you know, the intent was to move traffic through the downtown area faster. And they put in these buttons so that when you wanted to cross, you know, you would see the white figure and everything else. And I have this terrible feeling that whatever they do with this streetscape project, God help us if they don't commit to maintaining it, number one, okay? I mean, how many great ideas have we had? And then, you know, it falls into disrepair or whatever. Anything they do, right, wrong, or indifferent, whether you agree with them or not, they need to commit to long-term maintenance. And if they're not going to do that, make no changes, okay, because I'm tired of it. Number two, I understand that they talked to the hotels, and the banks, and the hospitals, and the fire department, and the police department, and the developers, and a whole litany of people, and the business owners. And they talked to the Center for Independent Living, and Keith Williams is great, okay? But I saw no effort to go down to the high-rises and the other newly renovated apartments and talk to the residents who walk the downtown area day after day. I haven't had a car since 2012, and I walk everywhere downtown every day. And I can tell you, it's not just the malfunctioning buttons, and it's not just, you know, the traffic lights. It's the drivers who are glued to their cell phones, not paying attention to anything, the traffic lights, other cars. And we don't really hold drivers accountable for breaking the law. We don't. You know, I mean, at worst, they get a slap on the wrist. And, you know, I mean, they get more discipline if they fail to pay their parking fines than if they, you know, run a pedestrian over. It's bad, okay? I wish that the people who were here for the caucus had stayed to listen to comments by the general public, okay? Because if they're not going to come to us and ask us for our opinions, those of us who pay taxes, and I do pay property taxes, even though I don't own property, I pay them, okay, for family member, those of us who pay property taxes and live in the downtown area, what we think. You know, it's not easy when you have a problem with arthritis, and you have a bad day, and you're using a cane or a walker, and you're trying to cross a street, any street. Traffic light stops and doesn't make a difference. I ended up in the ER this month, and I had to go on stair rides, and a five-minute walk from Samters to the cathedral was now 15 minutes. You should have seen me trying to cross the street and getting the honking horns and the fingers and everything else. But I'm still telling you, there are questions, and one of the people, one of the stakeholders that I don't think was included was the disabled and elderly people who live in the downtown high-rises. We pay taxes, and we have opinions. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Les Spindler?
Evening, Counsel. Les Spindler, City resident homeowner. Driving around the city, I see all these beautiful new crosswalks painted. What I want to know is, how does that make it safer for anybody to cross the street? Crickets?
Far more, far more visible.
There's also more questions to be asked next week when they come in.
Yeah, how does it make it safer just because there's nice white crosswalks?
Right, because it sticks out more and makes it more visible for drivers. Plus, they're going to have to stop at the stop sign.
I don't know. I think it's a waste of time. And I asked for a couple lines to be painted on Euclid Avenue coming down on Main Avenue so people can make a right turn instead of waiting for people who want to go left, and nothing happened there. And about this streetscape project, I still haven't heard them answer the question that I asked the Lackawanna College. How are visually impaired people going to know how to cross the street or when to cross? Did they answer that question?
We didn't get a chance to ask it because it ended early. But we do have a letter from, I believe, letter of support from...
They did answer it. They said that there would be audio cues if someone is visually impaired, then, and it's also motion.
How do those audio cues come on?
Because there's a motion sensor, so when it detects the pedestrian at the intersection, then that's when it will cue it.
I could see that failing. Anyway.
Blind Association.
The Blind Association?
Yeah, there's a letter of support from the Blind Association.
Anyway, I think this 5B should be tabled till January when a new council takes over. Because I know the three of you up there that are majority, they're going to do what the mayor wants you to do, and you're going to pass this through, and I think it's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard of.
I'm going to do what I want to do.
What we have to do come three weeks today in November, November 4th, is elect a new council supermajority, like we did when Janet Evans was president of council. We elected a supermajority, took Chris Dougherty's checkbook away from him, and stopped all his ridiculous BS, which was borrowing and spending. He almost borrowed and spent this city into bankruptcy. And you people named a park after him. That's ridiculous. I think this legislation should be tabled for a new council next year and voted on then. But I know you people won't do it because you listen to what the mayor tells you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lee Morgan?
Good evening, Counsel. Lee Morgan. The first thing I have here is the federal courts. I think they close in a couple more days because the budget impasse. But I'd just like to share the fact that, I haven't done it yet, but the little bit of discovery I did with ECTV has basically proved my point. So I think if I do a request for summary judgment, the guy, the judge is probably a Democrat, but I don't see why I couldn't win because I proved everything that I've alleged. And, you know, it's sad when a government works the way this city's government works by stifling free speech and stopping residents from having access to the public access channel where an issue like this could be discussed. But I'm totally and 100% against this project. And I think all somebody has to do is go up Mulberry Street and see what happened to the University of Scranton. I'm amazed that none of those children got run over in the street, and they're young adults. But narrowing Mulberry Street was a mistake. Doing all the silly things we went up there and did by the University of Scranton was a mistake, especially if you grew up on the hill like I did. And when you look at this project, I'd like to ask every Scrantonian to go up to Naog Park and look for the millions and millions of dollars that Chris Dougherty spent there. When you find them, let us know where they are, okay? Because the big problem we have here is that we had studies, and those studies put those lights there, and they structured traffic flow through the downtown, and it really seems to work extremely well. But we've got to spend millions and millions of dollars, and we've got to come up with a way to justify it. And the harm we're going to do to the city is beyond ridiculous. And adding 67 more parking spaces to help fund a failed parking authority isn't going to help the residents. What we really need to do in this city, I'm glad my children aren't here, I'm glad that I've got them all to leave the city, okay? What we need is to build light, industry, infrastructure in the city. We need to start building an economic engine in this city to give young adults an opportunity to have a leg up. What we've done in this city is move in a way for the next generation where they won't be able to earn a decent living and lift this city up. Because for too long, we've elected Democrats here, and they thought that the poorer they made the city, the more federal and state funds they'd get here, and they've done a really good job of it. You know, you'd have to be me as a child, growing up, well, in Lower Green Ridge and in the hill, watching what happened to Adams Avenue as they tore all that down, you know? And then you look at the project that Chris Dougherty wants to do with Hilltop. All public money, okay? But all the politicians and their families are living good. It's the ordinary people that can't pay their water and their sewer bills. And we all know that the City of Scranton mismanaged the sewer authority. And when you look in this project, how they're getting ready to change all these streets from one-way to two-way, remember one thing, they didn't get any wider, okay? And now when people cross the street, they'll have to look for traffic in two directions. And when you talk about people not stopping, I don't know, a light's more conducive to a car stopping than a sign, okay? And the crosswalks, like I said, go up to the hill and look. Watch those young people walk across those streets, even though the speed limit's reduced and the road is narrowed there. Terrible decision by the city. All those young adults should be crossing under the roadway. There should be tunnels built under the roadway to cross those children across, well, young adults across those streets. We've made some very poor decisions. And this mayor, we can spend $15 million. We can spend millions and millions of dollars, but it's not increasing the quality of life of the residents who live here. But it's making certain people rich, okay? And we've got to do something different here. In politics, the Democrats are the party of keeping the people down. I explained that to you last week. They were against everything in the '60s that empowered people. The Republicans drove it all. That's probably why Martin Luther King was a Republican, okay? And we need to do something different here. We need to vote that down and think.
Thank you. Bob Bowles?
Bob Bowles, Scranton. Tonight, I'm here to honor Charlie Kirk on his birthday. It's October 14th, and his birthday is the same as Mayan, is the same as General Dwight Eisenhower. It goes back on to who we are, and fortunately, I'm proud to say that today's my birthday and his also. and his also. But unfortunately, you know, he wasn't here to receive the medal from President Trump, the Freedom Medal for what he did. Contrary, his life was cut short by a queer assassin bullet. Yet outside, on the pole again, we have the queer flag that we're honoring again. I already have litigation against it. It's going to the State Supreme Court. And eventually, those flags are not going to be on our building. They're not to be honored, not when you're an assassin and you kill people and you think you should be honored. No way in hell. Today, I was honored to have received from the President of the United States, a personal signed birthday card from the President for everything I've done in the community and around the country. And I couldn't have been prouder to have received that today. And being from Scranton, getting that, the next thing I want to see is Biden signs gone. And we're in the middle of the litigation and getting rid of him too. It's time we bring the city back. I'm still, like I said, appealing the queer flags on City Hall, but the mayor came from Portland, there was a queer bar on every street. I spent a lot of time in Oregon, so I know what I'm doing. And her direction to spend millions and millions of dollars in this city, in this county, is an absurdity. I watched the stupid thing over the streets. It's the dumbest thing I ever saw. What you should do is talk to the fire chief and the police chief and get a list of all the accidents that have happened and pedestrian hits. Then you know where to start. That's the formula to need to start at. Not this rich wish list that somebody wants to make. One-way streets again. We already learned in the past that one-way streets suck in a city. You're putting bicycle path on Wilmington Avenue, but the other day I'm going down there, here's a moron coming the wrong way on his bicycle. So how do you account that you're going to prevent stupidity? It's not going to happen. And people will run a red light, they'll just as well run a damn stop sign. It don't make a difference. So what I saw here today, and I've been all over the world, I've been, got millions of miles and over the road driver as the tractor trailer driver and the companies I had. I spent time on the bobtail truck racing track over 250 miles an hour. And when I've been all, born and raised in this city, and I see people go through stop signs, not pay attention to anybody, I see dumb people walking in the crosswalks and not even pay attention what the hell they're looking at. So what I saw here tonight is an absolute joke. Talk to the chiefs and then get a list of all the accidents that really happened here and see if this is warranted. You're never going to change stupidity, I don't care what you do. And you're not going to change dumb drivers. Just like during the Kings rally, I had a moron drive up the right side of the trailer as I was making a right-hand turn. Pure stupidity. And you're not going to change it. And then the last thing is, I think it's beneficial to everybody to know, we filed a suit against the tax assessor to prevent him from certifying the tax assessment. Gahan stated, "The commissioners have nothing to do with it, it's up to the assessor." Well, Mr. Assessor, guess why? It's going to be a long day in hell before you're able to certify the assessment or the tax increase and screw the people in this community. And I'm proud to say I'm the one orchestrating it and I'm proud to say, we're going to bring Scranton back where it belongs and we're going to put government where it belongs. And I'm happy to see the mayor running like she's running. I can't wait until she loses both seats and we bring Scranton back where the hell it belongs. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have to leave now, I'm real late for my dinner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glennish Johns?
Good evening, Council. Glennish Johns, founder and CEO of the Black Scranton Project. I just wanted to come up here and congratulate Ms. Norma Jeffries again on the proclamation. She is a wonderful, wonderful woman and a fixture here in the city of Scranton. I just kind of wanted to bring it full circle for myself back here on the chambers and share with the people here, many of whom I've seen over the past, coming up on a decade now. The first time I came to these chambers for a city council meeting, Ms. Norma was here and she taught me all of the basic rules about how city council works, how I signed my name up to speak, you know, where to sit and all the things, who everybody was on council at the time. And it was really valuable and made me feel very comfortable to come here and sit every week during that time. This is like 2016, 2017, up until like 2020 almost, I was coming often. And she just really made a big impact. As you can see, sometimes it's a little intimidating to come up here and say the things that you want to say to council, to the city, or sitting amongst some of the residents here. But she was always very welcoming and she always gave great ideas on how to participate in city politics. So I just wanted to come up there and say, again, thank you to the city for recognizing her, but also to, again, put it into a community perspective, how much she is valuable to the people in the community. Not, not only just that, but she helped me as I got prepared to create my nonprofit. She comes to a lot of our events, she gives great ideas, and she's constantly helping everyone regardless of their age, regardless of their standing. She wants to be, she wants to be someone who helps people love our city and participate in all that we have going on. So I just wanted to give that little message. And while I'm standing up here, I wanted to give a shameless plug. Black Scranton Project has two events this week. We are partnering with WVIA this Thursday. We're doing a watch party for a documentary that's premiering Thursday night at 7:00 PM. It's called Making Nipa Home, which kind of ties into what we're saying. So we will be starting our watch party at Black Scranton Project Center for Arts and Culture at 6:30. It starts at 7:00, the show. And we will just be talking about the film and also the people that were involved in the documentary will be at our space as well. That is 1902 North Main Avenue, Scranton and North Scranton. And then also this Saturday, we have a journaling workshop that's open to all ages. It's called I Love Myself: Silencing Negative Self-Talk, which I know a lot of us can use some support in that. So it's a free event from 12 to 2 at our Center for Arts and Culture. We'll be working with Jennifer Alike. She does a lot of wellness practices, so we'll be giving some journaling prompts, meditation, and just some affirmations to bring a little bit of positivity and community into your day. So if you're interested, more information at blackscranton.org. You can follow us on social media. And again, thank you, Council, for listening to me and everyone here. And again, congratulations to Ms. Norma Jeffries for being such an amazing woman for everyone here and not just in Scranton, but northeastern PA. Thank you.
Thank you. Leonard Holsman?
Hello, and thank you for letting me come and speak to you, City Council. I live over on the 1700 block of Sanderson Avenue in Greenwich. And I've owned property there since 1987. My wife had a preschool there on the corner. And then I bought 1757 Sanderson Avenue and we moved there when I retired, moved back to the city. In 1987, when I bought 1759 Sanderson Avenue for my wife's preschool, I did, had to do a lot of work remodeling. And the first thing I realized, that the intersection of where 1700 block, 600 block of Electric Street and the 1800 block of Sanderson Avenue is a very, very dangerous intersection. I have been complaining and asking for help, for, to do something in regards to the safety issues of that intersection. One, we have a tremendous amount of accidents there. We have one stop sign on the Electric Street and none on the 1700 block and the 1800 block of Sanderson. In other words, to make that a three-way stop sign to, to better traffic control there. We have accidents, T-boned accidents there. I could spend an hour and a half telling you about how the seriousness of the accidents, amazing that no one has been killed. But people have been hauled out of there in ambulances and cars have been totally destroyed. Now, you have to visualize, we're right in the business district of Greenwich there, as small it is, and how cars could come back through there so fast and demolish each other. I've seen three and four cars, two and three cars totally demolished and the people hauled out of there in the ambulances over the years. Last year, with the help of Bill Gunn, I wrote a letter to city council and to the mayor in regards to our safety issues there and asked for help. And basically, I haven't gotten anywhere. And all these years that I've been complaining to different people and asking, it just goes nowhere. We need, one thing I was very happy to see is that they're putting these pedestrians crosswalks through, all through the city, and I think it's beautiful. But I've been after them to have them across Electric Street and Sanderson Avenue where as people try to cross there to get to the bus station or a bus stop. To no avail. I walked around here now, we have Robert Moore School over there. We have children coming from Electric Street. We have children coming up and down Sanderson Avenue to go over to the school. And they're crossing roads with no crosswalks. They're not, they're not even there. The 700 block of Electric Street, there's a dogleg there with Electric Street. Okay? And the corner of the 700 block of Electric Street does not have handicapped corners. They have a curb there, seven inches deep. Okay? And there aren't any crosswalks there. Now, I thought that was mandatory. When they went going through all, you know, all the other corners, they're done, but not there. There's no crosswalks there. The kids coming up from the 700, even side of the 700 block of Sanderson Avenue and going up 7, Electric Street to go over to Robert Moore School, they have to cross over Electric Street. There are no crosswalks there for these kids and families. You see these parents trying to get across here and, and, and dig over. The next block down on side of, on Boulevard Avenue, there's a street there, Columbia Street that runs right along Robert Moore School. There aren't any crosswalks there. Those kids are walking across that, those streets without the crosswalks. Greenwich Corners, Market Street and Sanderson Avenue, they're, they're all gone. There had been there, but they're not there anymore. They have to be done. Now, I've seen what they've been doing the rest of the city and it's wonderful, but nothing is happening here. And I have been asking for years for this to be done, just on our block there because of the, the, the traffic.
Mr. Boltenberg, would you please request a traffic study for the intersection that he speaks of? And definitely follow up with crosswalks, they're everywhere, so they need to be there.
Are you looking for a stop sign coming down Sanderson as, as you get to Electric Street?
Yes, I'm looking.
Right now, that...
What I'm, I'm asking for, and I've been asking for...
And I know you want crosswalks.
For years.
Well, let's, let's, Mr. Boltenberg, find out first if there has been a study there and if it died or what happened to it. If there has not been, then we need one, but we certainly need the crosswalks finished. Okay? Thank you.
But, all right, may I tighten this up?
Thank you.
Can you send us an email with your exact request?
I have it.
You have it?
There is a letter sent to you last year from, with Bill Gunn. I don't know if you still have it, but, well, that would help with the traffic because, you know, I'm not giving you time, but we have people coming, accidents there. People are coming through there 50 miles an hour in a one-block area and demolishing cars. And you don't do that at 25 miles an hour.
Who requests a traffic study?
I would appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Ron Elman?
Hello, Council. This meeting about your downtown is just absolutely disgusting for me as a taxpayer. Everything's for downtown with Cognetti's obsession. How could you even consider spending money 60 days to see what's going to happen? These consultants get paid, but everything is a monumental waste that you people give $2 million to a bunch of wealthy people for parking and can't even get a veteran and handicap free parking. You people are just a failure for the city, taxpayers. Now, this senseless painting streets all colors and everything. You'd have to be out there every couple weeks spending money. Where's all this money supposed to come from? Taxes are outrageous. You people are in a dream world of Cognetti's because of this obsession with, you got a bunch of lousy tax cheats downtown that support her. Everything old is a historic building they don't pay taxes on. I pay taxes. You wanted to hear a reality? Directly across the street at a resident, this idiot wants to make a garage. He's going to the zoning board. It's houses next to him, houses behind him, houses across the street. Who knows what these morons in the, in your zoning board, they're the ones that, while we have a solar farm inside the city limits. Hundreds of apartments made, no building permits. This is the kind of zoning board that I have to deal with. I tell you, I just, I can't believe what's going on. And there's people just lay here like sheep going to slaughter. It's senseless. Why can't this $7 million plan wait till November? Hopefully, she won't even be here in November. There's two, two people wanting the job. I don't know if Trish is even in it, I haven't seen her name. And Mr. Barrett, probably 10 times experienced as she is in politics, but this city, you're talking about all this money for expenditures, waste. My car pays taxes to use the street. Electric vehicles, you want to give half the street that I'm paying for to electric vehicles that are completely illegal? Why don't you get it through your head? The state says you have to be licensed, insured, and inspected to be on the streets. You're sitting there planning to spend all this money for illegal vehicles. That's the kind of council we got. I don't know. I just think, I just assume stay at home and see what happens has come to these meetings anymore. 25, 30 years, I've never seen a city go to pot like it has between Biden and Cognetti. It's a shame what you people have allowed this city to happen. And the taxpayers' expense, you people don't know what goes on in the city. Go down to Jackson Street, some of those side streets that look like a war zone, and you're talking about spending $7 million downtown for a bunch of tax cheats. You ought to be ashamed of yourselves. Mr. Smalley, it's like being pregnant, yar, yar. You going to vote for this?
Yes, I am.
See? What about you, Mr. Edwards? You think?
You don't, you can't ask all the, unless they want to ask, answer, but...
I like some of it, I don't like all of it.
It's part of a meeting, why can't I find out? I want to know what you think. I see silence is your answer.
You'll know in probably 10 minutes.
Thank you, Ron. Amber Viola?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, City Council. I appreciate the, the moment to speak. I wanted to speak on behalf of the Lackawanna County NAACP about Ms. Norma Jeffries. First, I'd like to thank you guys all for giving her the proclamation. That was just such a wonderful gesture to somebody who is above and beyond deserving of all the accolades and recognition. We could not have formed our local chapter of the NAACP. We could not have formed our local chapter of the NAACP here without Ms. Norma Jeffries. I came back to Scranton after being in Navy and Ms. Norma's one of the first person that I met here. And as Glenn has said, she kind of took me under her wing and showed me around, showed me how to come to city council, be at city hall. She's one of the people who really pushed me to even go out for city council at one point. She pushed me to take the job at, with the page Cognetti, and I am so appreciative of that. She has been such a role model and example to all of the kids here and young adults in this area, not just Scranton, but Lackawanna County as well. She is a wealth of history, a wealth of knowledge, and we are going to lose so much when she moves away from us. And I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank her, to give her her flowers while she's here, because she definitely deserves him. I wanted to thank all the people who came out tonight to really show their support for her. If there's ever a community event, Ms. Norma's going to be the first person to sign up. She's going to be one of the first people there, and she's always going to be there to help. I think that she truly is an example of what a public servant is, and she is an example of what a public servant should be. And I think that we all need to take a step back and be like, be more like Ms. Norma. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Rick Little? Rick?
This is Rick Little. It's Taco Tuesday over at the Assisi Catholic Relief and seems that it's like Speed Bump Tuesday, too. It was a surprise coming in here. Anyway, all, all this stuff, it, it's like Groundhog Day. Same thing with the parking meters. You get new parking meters, you get new stop signs, speed lights. Let me tell you, if somebody who's still alive, I see these people pushing the buttons on those things and the robot says walk, never says anything else, or it says wait, you know, and you're just there. You have to look both ways. You have to take your life into your own hands. I think there's a lot of problem with Democrats at the moment and democracy, what they're talking about democracy in this area, because it makes no sense to me, the Home Rule Charter. Everything seems to be good before we got the Home Rule Charter. We had the Walsh Swimming Pools and, you know, the early 70s, 80s, people remembering the good, good times in Scranton. But it's when the, you know, the office, they always say, there's no party like a Scranton party. Well, the Scranton party is the Democrat party here. And, I mean, I was, I got out of the, uh, God told me to run, that I have to become the mayor of Scranton. I'm, I was 71 years old. I'm put out on the street after 14 and a half years living in Scranton Housing Authority, Adams Avenue High Rise. And I look into the history of everything. That building was built for the elderly. It was built with federal funds. Somewhere along the line, it, it became like, oh, well, we can, we can dodge that, sneak This wasn't covered by federal funds, this was, you know? And I remember, you know, they put Officer Herring in jail. But it, it's crazy how, how the lawyer class, how the judges have taken over, and it's not fair. And it's always in relation to housing, you know, a person's residency and elections. And that's Scranton's problem. They keep going on, year after year, and, and the Home Rule Charter, which came to Scranton in 76 and, and the county in 77, I mean, we're, we're at the end of the cul-de-sac. Everything is decided by judges and the taxpayers are paying for the judges. And it can't, it cannot sustain. And we're going to put in speed bumps, but we don't, we haven't had a head of DPW for a long time. It should be put in by people working for the city of Scranton. That would build the city of Scranton. But no, it has to be, you know, it's consultants and, and we'll, we'll get an outside contractor and buy it from someplace in New York to do it. I am, I ended up here totally living on Social Security and the judiciary evicted me because they're running, they're running a Democrat voting farm. I could see this immediately when I moved in. Everything was criminalized, everything was for some insurance thing, and there was a fire every week. And then I meet people, oh, I'm working for Matt Cartwright's office and I got a free apartment. Well, I'm homeless and I'm standing under the, the Dunder Mifflin Building, thinking about history, thinking about Thomas Mifflin who signed the, the, the Continental Congress thing in PA. There's a great history here, but they have not kept their end of the bargain in Lackawanna. And no one, Scranton, the things of Scranton aren't Scranton's anymore. And that's why I encourage you to vote for me on the AA Mission From God Party for mayor of Scranton this November 4th. And the debate is this Thursday.
Thank you. That is all for our sign-in sheet. Would anyone else like to address council?
We're a Scranton resident for saying, thank you all for giving Norma that beautiful proclamation and the street sign that she totally, totally deserved. Okay, I'm going to ask a few questions about the caucus that maybe you have to ask. I might have missed a few things because Mr. Bullis kept talking and I'm, so I did miss some things. So first of all, I was wondering, how many four-way stop signs are there downtown versus the lights? Oh, shoot, where'd my, okay. And I was wondering, who's responsible to make sure that it's going to be working? What happens if the internet goes down? Unless I missed it, was everything connected to an app and the internet for the flashing lights? And I know they mentioned Comcast, which my Comcast internet has gone down off and on. I mean, would that be the whole thing? Because I know when a traffic light goes out, usually somebody sees it, calls the police, and then they come and have somebody out there directing the traffic. So I was curious about that. They said they were going to plant trees, and I was just thinking, is somebody going to take care of it to make sure they're not blocking any of those stop signs? Because I know in the Hill section, there's quite a few stop signs that sometimes you almost have to be on top of them with, with the trees blocking them. And there was another thing was, let me see, there was, oh, because I skipped it. Wyoming and Mulberry, if I'm not mistaken, the only, the most of the hit and runs I read in the newspaper might have been Wyoming and Mulberry, where the street widens out when you come down Mulberry. Personally, I would like to see an extra traffic light in the middle where they have that grassy part, just so people could get halfway across and then get halfway across the other way. I was happy to see that my biggest concern was to let them try it out before they actually did all that stuff. That was addressed. Okay, the other thing I wanted to address was the, the temperature for the homeless that I brought up last, two weeks ago, I think it was. And Jessica mentioned it last week as I saw it on TV, and thank you for checking on the curb cut, Jessica. The, I think I was wondering about that is I thought, I was trying to listen to it on TV and sometimes it cuts in and out. Did you say something about the county?
Yes.
With the temperature?
It's the temperature of Lackawanna County goes by, so the city goes by.
Okay, so should Lackawanna County commissioners be the people I should be harassing instead of you?
Give it a shot.
We could, we could probably do our own doors, but I would have to speak with all the council members to see if they'd want to, if somebody would want to head something like that, look into it.
Yeah, I didn't really hear you.
I said, I will ask council members later if anybody wants to head something like that and look into changing that. I'm sure we could make our own ordinance for that.
At least a little warmer. I mean, that's kind of crazy and I don't mind going to Lackawanna County and annoying them, so.
Let's hurry.
Okay, so the other, only other thing since I have enough time to say is usually when Mr. Bullis speaks, I have something to say after him. I didn't like his reference to the queer flag, saying basically, because supposedly the person that shot Charlie Kirk was belonging to the queer community, that we should be honoring any queer people, or please don't ever think that the rest of us feel that way. And thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Tonight we have what we all expected, an all-way stop sign ordinance. We were told at the Lackawanna College meeting that we would have updates and further input, at least two meetings. We received none. The administration decided what it wanted and told us what we should think, and we should be happy with that. And when some reasonable questions arose, how were they addressed? The mayor stepped up and tried to end the public questions at the meeting, trying to take away the microphone from the peoples they could not speak. I sent to members of council a report from WCVB 5 Boston Investigations called, "In One of America's Most Walkable Cities, A Danger For Pedestrians." They have straight and turn lights go green at the same time the walk indicators in that direction say it's okay to cross. They don't work. People see the green light and turn into pedestrians. There's no fix for the blind at stop signs, as they give really no audible alerts. As it was brought up prior, I guess it would be unkind for us, the blind and visually impaired should not be referred to as the new city speed bumps. We'll just call the blind and visually impaired mobile traffic calming devices. That way we can report it as a mobile traffic calming device was hit by a car. Now that's forward thinking. Fine optics. What's safer pedestrians? Two one-way streets that offer two traffic choices each, straight ahead or a single turn, or a four-way? Let's take North Washington and Linden with two one-ways. The pedestrian on the west side of Washington has to watch Linden Street alone. If they're on the east side, they need to watch the straight from Linden and the turn off Washington. Each lane has two choices. Now with the four traffics, we have four choices. It becomes 12 because every street now has a straight left and right turn into your crosswalks. We know everyone in Scranton uses turn signals and good luck crossing on a walker or wheelchair. Now looking at the note in 5B, the verbiage for the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices and Criteria, Section C, Minimum Volumes. Mr. Poach has warned about them and the mayor's only, at the mayor's only dog and pony show. Once the traffic lights are removed, no matter how we try to sell it as a test period, the traffic control will not allow them back in because they do not qualify anymore, under C, minimum volume requirements, which is in your documents tonight. The mayor is attempting to remove one-way streets and lights and give us a case where there is no going back. In Southside, we had a stop sign on a crosswalk, a pedestrian was hit crossing the street. It was a four-way stop intersection, clearly painted crosswalks, but it still happened. A little over a year ago, at Washington Vine, a one-way and a two-way, at the light at the library, a woman was run over as well. Last week, while driving to this council session, I was met with a person driving the wrong way down Adams Avenue who became upset as they pulled into a parking space and I stopped so they could turn around to go the right direction, but they wanted to continue in the wrong direction because they knew where they were going, where they wanted to go to. When we have drivers who ignore one-ways, you expect them to pay attention to a stop sign? For walkability and markability, marketability, how many dead are reasonable? What level of adults and kids hospitalized or dead are acceptable? As kids crossing, are those least visible to cars? This is not the first time the administration ignored the people's will. They did it with the Recovery Act. We have a walkability with serious questions and very tangible permanent harm possible and the assurance of two meetings that never happen. What we're told is the people are too stupid, sit down, shut up, and vote for me. This is on the verge of the mayoral and city council vote that may change the direction for the city. So I get the rush. We may see the vote by people to reconsider some changes and who may tap the brakes. I would suggest discussions and answers before funerals. Pick it up next year, hear the people. For those viewing this, if you believe they're unwilling to hold off, your representatives give a chance to vote them out of office. They are willing to risk the safety of people, then we can't allow them the ability to make those choices. And as Mr. Smurl said directly before this body, we have a session next week for this same thing, but he has already made his choice. He has already said how he's going to vote. He doesn't care what's said in here. Good night.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Scranton City residents and council. Mike Mancini, Scranton. Tonight, on the question, why? Why would someone be offended by my words each week before council? I pay attention to the local stuff. I point out the things that need to be done, corrected, or done poorly with ways to resolve the issue on behalf of others. Everyone has opinions about national stuff. What is your opinion of Scranton and how it operates? Personally, currently, I give Scranton half a star. It deserves five stars because of its citizens and potential. If my, if my words offend you, pick better candidates. Replacing downtown traffic lights with stop signs, why? Because Paige breaks everything. Clerical staff, police officers, firefighters, DPW employee unions will not endorse the mayor. Why? Because they work for her. They witnessed firsthand her destruction. They know her well. To the rest of Scranton, you learn this just like riding your bike. Stranger, danger. In the absence of the mayor, the deputy mayor is in charge. The city does not have one named. The out-of-county business administrator makes decisions in violation of the Home Rule Charter. Why does the council president and head of the Rules Committee not address this violation under Section 609? Because he's endorsed by the mayor. Communication with PA Water would change the road conditions for the better. Why is this not being addressed by the mayor? Because she doesn't care. When you hire a communications director, that person becomes your voice. Wendy Wilson, her communications director, posted something on Facebook about a school board director, Bob Casey. I've known Bob for over 40 years. He's a good man. He does not deserve the attempted demoralization of his character. I not only blame Wendy, but I also blame Paige Cognetti. To Chris Kelly from the Times, shame on you for downplaying this post that has since been deleted. To my friend Bob, thank you for being you. Paige eyed up the state senate seat just to see it given to Marty Flynn. She fired his mother after 19 years. It just shy of repentance. Why? Because it's all about Paige. She is applying to be, for the same DCNR grant that was denied for the deep-end pool in Naug. They've been closed for seven years. There should be two pools there currently. Are there even covers for the pools? Four last deep-end pools, history lost. Why? Our city has so much potential. Paige has made our situation much worse since her arrival. Scranton has always been our backup plant. Every citizen of Scranton is our backup plant. It's time to toss that Tuscan chicken sandwich away. It has lost its taste. Three weeks today, we vote. I mentioned character over party. There's one person who stands out in this election cycle. He has proven by example a pre-clue to what he could do in one of those seats. He will utilize the excellent skill set in Mr. Volenberg. He has taken many calls, pointed out many issues, and found ways to resolve- Virgil Argenna is a good man, who means well and deserves your vote. He has earned mine. I know the kindness of our citizens. I will continue to keep asking the questions and keep getting crickets. I will keep the pressure on. I would hope that our citizens and voters do the same. We deserve so much better. Those in power continue to try and dismiss me and will not take me seriously. That, too, is a lie. Those in power take those who operate on a different level, like Virgil and I, very seriously. They could ignore our questions and concerns, but they cannot silence all of us. You can feel the dominoes about to fall. We feel it, too. It takes courage, passion, and a sense of doing the right thing to push those dominoes. Once a few fall for the better, they all fall. When that happens, you get your city back, because you deserve better. Next week, the remainder of my choices for this election cycle and why. Good evening, council.
Thank you. Anyone else? Doesn't look like it, Frank.
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few. There's a couple ongoing concerns from residents, Tripley, Crown Ave., Gibbon Street, and North Main, Clearview. I've sent all of that stuff in through email, Frank, so just waiting to hear on some of those areas. We did get some questions back from last week. I had asked about if the administration was, had filled the position of DPW Director, Parks Director, and Refuge Coordinator, and the answer that I got back was just that the city administration is continuing to interview prospective candidates for those positions. Last week, we spoke about the lookout, which I was happy to see that we got a cost estimate for that project. There were several questions asked, but one of the questions I had asked was, because it's a WPA project, if the city would look into eligibility for WPA grants. The answer I got back was that the city is investigating the lookout's eligibility for National Registry of Historic Places, and that designation can open up additional funding opportunities. So, happy to hear that. I just, I'll believe it when I see it, so when I see it, I'll be even happier. There was a question asked by Marie Schumacher about the binoculars that were there. I did see them in the summer. The answer we got back was that in July, the viewfinder was hit by a car, and the base of it was broken. Tower Optical from Connecticut came and removed it, and I do believe that that was the group that built it in the first place. The Architectural American Heritage Group informed the city that in order to replace it, we would have to ensure its safety, so the city's going to install safety measures to ensure that it won't be hit again. So, that was the answer for that question. I did ask a question. We got, we had two grants that were put in front of council. One was for one point, it was $1,264,658. It came on September 2nd. It was related to the Lackawanna Avenue project. With that, some council members did ask if streetlights or traffic lights were going to be replaced. The answer that we got on that was that it was not traffic lights. They were, in fact, streetlights. Last week, we got a grant, which was a match grant, so it was for $632,329, which was equivalent to the same thing. And the question that I had asked was, why with one grant application? We were saying it wasn't for replacement of streetlights, but the second one, it was. The city answered the question, which I thought they would have answered. They said that they applied for the two grants for a continuation of Lackawanna, the Lackawanna Avenue Streetscape Project. This is typical due to the high cost of these projects. As a point of reference, the Lackawanna Avenue Streetscape Project near the Radisson has four funding streams. So, we did talk about six funding streams for the project tonight, and this is what I assumed, that we applied for two separate grants for the same project. My question was, why, when we asked the question about traffic lights, where we told it was just streetlights, where the second grant application included traffic lights and had them listed? Several of us asked about how much, what were the additional costs of Naog? Bless you. And we got that the complete entire Naog Pool Complex for Engineering, an estimate, was a cost of $4 million. I believe that we did know that, but with what we had applied for, we wanted to know what the remainder was of that. So, where would we be at with this project? If we got that grant funding, is there still additional costs associated with that project? So, if we could ask that one, Mr. Volenberg, is there, after we get the grant funding, or if we are awarded that grant funding, what's the additional cost that will be on top of that?
I will, sir.
Thank you. It was also asked by the public was, who is the designated deputy mayor in the city? Which we know is Eileen Cipriani. She's the deputy mayor. And when the mayor is out of town, who makes decisions? So, it stated that in a rare event, the mayor is ill, per the city code, the duty falls on the deputy mayor. Fortunately, due to technology, the mayor is readily available via telephone. And then, it provides Article 3, Section 6.5, Paragraph C of the city code, the deputy mayor, the mayor shall designate any department head, or the city clerk to act as deputy mayor when the mayor cannot fulfill the duties due to illnesses or temporary absences from the city. So, the answer that we have is, it's Eileen Cipriani, which we knew before. We did get a glimpse tonight at the, at the plans for downtown, when it comes to one-way streets being converted to two-way streets, and our traffic lights being converted to stop signs. There are several aspects of this that I really like. I really like that we're going to sync our streetlights to have those pedestrian leads. But there are also parts of this that I do not like. I still have some questions. We're going to have bumpouts now, so American Water does have basins where these bumpouts may be. How are we coordinating with American Water to place these basins, when we're going to have bumpouts at stop signs in these areas? We talked about the electronics on the stop signs, so there's going to be lights that are flashing. They're going to flash all around an intersection when somebody steps into a crosswalk. Are we going to maintain these? We talked about Naog Park, about the maintenance of Naog Park. Millions of dollars were put into Naog Park, and we failed to maintain it over the years. Is this going to be the same case? When we come to this legislation tonight, I am going to make a motion to table this. I would like this to, I'd like to have a discussion with the public. We have a habit of approving these things too fast, and when feedback comes in, it's after the thing has been approved. So, I would like to get the public's input on this before we move forward, because it is a large change for our downtown area. We've gotten the same thing before. They said they spoke with 62 businesses. I spoke to several business people in the last few days. They were not contacted. So, if we can get a list of city businesses, it was 62 city businesses, if we could just get that list, I'd like to know that.
I will, sir.
Thank you. The total cost of a project is $15 million, and what we got tonight was $12.6 million. That's a, that's a large amount of money for, for this type of project. So, you know, before we move forward with it, I'd like all of our avenues explored. It's all for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few. First off, I had received a response, something I was checking in on regarding a broken pole on Kapow Avenue that I received a complaint about, and that's been there for some time. So, the update that I had received from DPW was that they have been in contact with PPL, and they said that they can't remove it until Frontier and Verizon both remove their services from the broken pole, and then they will take care of removing it. So, they have been in contact with Verizon, and they're trying to get in touch with Frontier. So, hopefully, that happens quickly, and they can take care of what they need to, so that the pole can be removed. So, that's the update on that. I did just want to bring up again Ms. Norma Jeffries, and I'm really glad that we did the proclamation for her tonight, and I just appreciate her so much. She certainly is a role model for many people out there. I've always appreciated her coming to council, and just her congeniality, her kindness, her honesty, that she's displayed here. She's always been respectful as well, and there's certainly people who could take a page out of her book and learn a lot from her, and how she conducts herself, and then just the, the amount that she devotes to the community, and that she's done that since, since she returned to Scranton. I really love that about her, and we will miss her once she, she moves down to Philadelphia. And then, lastly, just wanted to bring up, there's a speaker, this is, I think, the second time at least that it's been brought up, and comparing LGBTQ people to, I don't know, like the murderer of Charlie Kirk. And I don't, I don't know what the sexual orientation was of, of the murderer, and I, I don't think it has anything to do with that, and I think it's, it's irresponsible and disgraceful to even make that comparison, or bring that up. And then, to bring up the LGBTQ pride flag on top of it, I'm not really seeing where that, where that comes in. But I mean, I'm proud to be part of that, that community, and when we do have the flag up, or even the people who made temporary chalk rainbow crosswalks over the weekend for National Coming Out Day, I think that's a really beautiful, positive thing. And I also don't appreciate the use of the word queer in a derogatory fashion. Queer is a word that the LGBTQ community took back a number of years ago, and it's something that in the past has been used in a derogatory way, but I think we made it a really positive way for our community to describe the queer community, or queer individuals, or to identify as, as queer, which is different from using it with negative connotations to describe a queer, as in a noun, like we're less than. So, I really don't appreciate that, and I feel that does go against our council rules, once again, of using derogatory language in chambers and attacking people. So, you know, I would just request that speakers in the future avoid that. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McAndrew, you have any motions or comments?
I got a couple. Well, I definitely want to applaud Norma. Her devotion to the city, her, her great sense of humor, and, and her great sense of community. I'm definitely going to miss her. I always liked engaging her with all the events she did up at, at Naog, especially the food drives. They're always fun. So, definitely going to miss her. All right, so next, also brought to my attention is potholes that need to be fixed on the 700 block of Cherry, and the 700, at 725 Factory Place. Also, this same resident brought to my attention that there's a handicap sign no longer needed at 726 Cherry Street. I don't know what that process is on removal, and why, and how, but if, I, I believe there is one, so if we can have that, if you can send that over to, it's probably the police department to take a look at.
I will, sir.
And more than once, probably two to three times this year, I've brought up the need for the turning lanes on Meridian and Luzern, and Railroad and Luzern to be painted. I know they said there, you know, there, there's plans to do that, but I was just reminded that they haven't been done, so it's been a couple months.
That's correct. One is for part of the paving project, but the other one is not, so I'll follow up on the one that needs it right away.
So, we're waiting for the paving for them. That's fine. But the other, okay. Thank you very much. And that's, the other situation with the parallel street, that was brought to your attention today, or your office, and you sent it out to 311, and also, the administration's been notified? All right, so I'm happy to report that out to the gentleman who called me about it. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. McAndrew. I have just a few things. The pool covers for all of the new pools are being installed. I believe they have three in right now, and they are all new, so they are being trained how to put those on. So, I believe the last two would be Weston Field, and then Naog will be put on last. But we do have covers, and they will be putting them on. Another thing, Mr. Schuster had told you about, the, the lookout with the telescope up there, that's paid for. I just want to thank them. It's the only reason I'm bringing up, is the Architectural Heritage Association. They pay $500 every year to keep that machine free for the public. So, we don't, you don't have to put a quarter in to, to look through it. So, the Architectural Heritage Association, thank you for paying for that. Please take that out of here. And also, if you were on Kaiser Avenue and up by Ferdinand Street, you'll see that Ferdinand Street has been milled, and it's going to be paved this week. That wasn't on the paving list, but it was one of the worst streets in the city, and we were going to be doing Adams Avenue, but Adams Avenue has to be cut, one foot on each side to extend it, to make it wider. I don't know the reasoning for it, but I didn't see any reason to pave that street and then go back next year and cut it again. So, they moved, the city moved the money to Ferdinand Street, because it was really in really bad condition. So, I know they just traded that money for the one for Adams Avenue up to Ferdinand Street. So, that one is being done. I believe, oh, political signs. I was called by the newspaper, and they want to know our policy on political signs. Same as it was last time. Private property, nowhere else, basically. Keep them out of our parks, because they've been putting them in the park, they put them in Naog Park. I, I don't understand that, but any right-of-way, state property, Harrison Avenue, for some reason, they like that little park up there, but they are going to be removed again, and they will be kept at Weston Field. So, if your signs are gone, go to Weston Field, and they'll give them back to you. That's it.
Can I say one more thing? When it comes to Ferdinand Street, they, they paved it from the top down, but they've, they've stopped short of the intersection with Kaiser, Kaiser Avenue. Can we find out if they're looking into the basins there, and how much maybe, what the capacity is on the basins there before they finish that project, or what their plans are on, on those basins at the bottom of Kaiser? Because it does get, there is a high, high amount of water that comes down Ferdinand Street at, I mean, it's quite an angle there.
I'll take care of it.
All right. Thank you very much. And then, there was some holes over on Pittston Avenue and Pear. Did we ever hear anything about those?
I'll have to follow up. I don't have the latest report.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Norma Jeffries. Very happy that we, we made a proclamation to Norma Jeffries with the presentation that we got tonight. My mind was on that, but I'm really going to miss Norma. She is a joy to have here in council chambers, and I like to see her when she comes in. The weeks she's not here, I do miss her. So, good luck with her family. I'm glad she's going to be spending time with, with her family and her grandchildren, and we wish her luck.
Thank you.
5B for introduction and ordinance, installing always stops in certain downtown intersections for added pedestrian safety.
Mr. Chairman, I entertain a motion that I'm, 5B, introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I'd like to make a motion to table this. Let's just hold this up somewhat, so we can hear public input. This is the first the public is hearing about these projects, and I'd like to give them an opportunity to come into council chambers, email us, call us, however they would like to, to give their input, but if we can get as much public input on this as, as possible, I would like to, to catch that information.
Second.
Motion and a second, so I guess we will do a roll call on whether we want to table...
On that motion, it was said that no one spoke to downtown residents, and Wayne Evans, who was the former mayor of the city, lives downtown. It's my understanding that a lot of people were spoken to downtown, and along with businesses, and, and the Blind Association, and I believe Keith Williams and his group, I can't think of the name of it, off the top of my head.
Center for Independent Living.
Yeah, Center for Independent Living. Thank you very much. So, I, I would like to see this introduced this evening. We're going to have them come back in again. We'll have opportunities again next week to learn more about the, the project and ask, and that's where I stand.
Thank you, Mr. King. So, we will do a roll call on tabling 5B.
Mr. King?
No.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
No.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
No. Motion fails.
Motion fails, so we will now, all those in favor of introduction of 5B?
No, on the question.
On the question, I did, on the question again?
Well, I like the opportunity because it didn't, we weren't able to table it. So on the original motion, first of all, I mean, okay, so this streetscapes project, I like it and guess what? It's something doesn't happen unless you have a pandemic to get all this type of money. So we're going to do some cool things. Do I like the facade enhancement? Yes. Do I like the stormwater improvement? And definitely, because that's an issue. Do I like to increase lighting near the Radisson and some of it, period lighting, I think they said? Do I like the curbs widened with bump outs? Yeah. Are they safer? I agree. And also new sidewalks. Do I like all of that? Yes. Do I like changing stop signs to, or changing streetlights to four-way stops? No. Like most of it, don't like this. And you know what? I've heard from people that don't like this. So what I always say, I believe that some of the best ideas and solutions come from our residents and not always costly studies that rarely utilize a more common sense decision-making So, okay, so supposedly we got the blessing of the blind association and Center for Independent Living, and that's great, but I don't think that the four-way stop signs that are all blinking and then another blinking sign above it isn't going to distract drivers that are mostly distracted to begin with, especially with the advent of the cell phone. We see it every day. There's a law passed that's for a reason. So also, okay, so the blind association or the vision impaired association themselves have some type of buy-in, but we didn't get the full explanation, we got some of it. But what about people in wheelchairs, on crutches or elderly citizens? Stop signs create unsafe pressure to move quickly, especially when drivers roll through instead of stopping. I've been driving and walking downtown for at least 50 years and have always been able to navigate without any issue. I see no rationale, I mean, this is just my opinion, that makes sense for this proposed change. You know, sometimes I'm of the old school, if it ain't broke, why fix it? And that's where I am with this. So another reason is compliance with stop signs, it's inconsistent. Too often drivers treat them as optional. This creates uncertainty and confusion, especially for pedestrians who can't rely on visible cues. You know, rolling through a stop sign instead of coming to a full halt can lead to collisions. So I think that's more than likely to happen with all this, all these flashing lights, they're a distraction. Confusing right-of-way leads to hesitation and dangerous assumptions. So what I mean by that, whoever gets there first, it's going to be confusing. What if two cars get to the four ways at the same time? Then it's confusing, trying to, who goes first? Right? So I just like the certainty of a trampoline. This is my opinion, like I said, I like most of this streetscapes project because we need it, but this piece I don't, I don't agree with.
On the question, I feel as though the red lights downtown, in many instances, I mean, human nature is, you're going to fly to try to get through the yellow light, people fly through town to try to get the next green light, they're speeding, they're going much faster and I'm guilty myself, to tell you right now. I go to Clark Summit quite a bit and the way I get there, I go flying right down Spruce Street, it's the quickest way for me. Once the stop signs go in, I probably won't drive that way to Clark Summit, I'll be perfectly honest, because it's going to slow traffic down. Stop signs aren't, there's no question of whether it's red, whether it's yellow, whether it's green, it's red all the time. It's going, you are forced to have to stop. I just, I think it's a better option, so that's why I'm supporting it.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anyone else have a question?
On the question, I'll vote to introduce this tonight. I still have additional questions. I hope to meet with some of the administration and with Tom Riley over the course of the week to be able to ask those as well as having them here next week. I get the concerns from the side of people who would not want to see the traffic lights changed to stop signs, but then I, you know, I also understand that there are still a lot of collisions and a lot of accidents with pedestrians even with the traffic lights. And I know one of the speakers during public comment had brought up earlier that they felt like it was a negative with what was done on Mulberry Street over near the University of Scranton and I don't really see where they're coming from because I think that's, they've had a reduction in pedestrian-related accidents because of having those additions. They did those things to make it safer for the students and pedestrians crossing Mulberry Street. And I know if I, if I do want to get down downtown quicker, because I live up on the hill, then I might avoid Mulberry Street and cross over Harrison and go down Music instead, but when you do go down Mulberry, it does, as soon as you see those flashing lights, I stop even before I see a student because I know that someone has hit that so that they could cross the street. So I think it is helpful and beneficial what they've added there on Mulberry Street and I see, I could see things like that being incorporated throughout downtown for intersections that do have stop signs, working well there too, and slowing down the speed of traffic, which is what a lot of this is meant to do, is to slow down the speed of traffic within downtown. But I get that it would be a big learning curve, I would want it to be really well-thought-out, these changes, so as to limit confusion as much as possible. I know it would even take me some time to get used to a street that I know is being one-way to two-way and, but this is meant to make it easier to get around downtown and safer for everyone, so those are some of the reasons why I'm in favor of introducing it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I guess I will chime in like everyone else. I've been dealing this for at least two years from when it first started and it has never gone away, there's been continuous meetings with it. I've actually met with the Secretary of Transportation of Pennsylvania and discussed this in great detail. There were many hours spent on this, not only on the traffic's lights, but to calm traffic. In the early, in the late 60s, downtown was redesigned with the traffic lights, but at that time we had new bridges going in from the expressway and it was designed to move traffic. That's what its design was, that's what it still is. That's why we don't need it downtown. We've got to calm traffic. I know Chief Carroll has the statistics on how many accidents there were and this year alone, I believe from even the first few months this year, it's like 200 and some accidents downtown so far this year and all at intersections with traffic lights. So I believe this is going in the right direction. I have not, I've seen some studies that say traffic lights are not safe, but you have to provide the documentation to prove that. So, but I haven't stopped working on this in two years. It's not been an everyday thing, but there's a lot more information and that's why I suggested they come back next week to continue on this because there is a lot more information and everybody should hear it. So that's why I want it to move forward. So all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it and so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance, authorizing the conversion of certain portions of downtown from one-way streets to two-way streets and from two-way to one-way streets as outlined and specified herein.
This time I entertain a motion that I'm 5C being introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I'm also going to propose the same thing here, I'm going to make a motion to table. Again, it's not to per se stop this project, it's to hear the public out and to be able to gain more information before we move forward with this. I mean, we're changing the whole downtown, I think it's a pretty big deal.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the question.
On the question, I think each one of us was, were invited to meet with the city engineer and the mayor and Eileen Cipriani to come in and spend some time and look at the plan and ask questions and I know that I came in and did that and asked a lot of questions and took a lot of time to really listen and ask questions and spend time even before I got to see this decedent, so I don't know if everybody else took advantage of that, but I did and that's why I feel strongly about this.
Anyone else have a question?
Yeah, I didn't have the opportunity to meet with Mrs. Cipriani and the team because the email that everyone else seemed to got in a timely manner, mine came four days later and in the middle of the three days that she requested to meet. I did email her and told her that and said, you know what, I might as well wait because you're coming to caucus. And then I said, you know, of course, you know, if need be, I can always schedule something at a later date. And she responded, okay.
So I also reached out to Eileen Cipriani and the date I was given was today. It happened to be today before this meeting and I was not able to meet today, so I listened to it in public and I may meet with her in the future, but at this point in time, I've heard the presentation in public and I do believe that the public does need to hear the information as well, so I don't understand why presenting it in public to everyone at the same time is a bad thing.
Anyone else have a question? All right, we will do a roll call on tabling 5C.
Mr. King?
No.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
No.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Smurl.
No. So motion fails, so we will, on the question, if anyone else wanted more?
Okay, so like I said, I like some pieces of it. I'd like to table this to get a better explanation, but you know, what I heard tonight and the rationale for this piece, I might be okay with. So I'll at least vote to move this tonight, only because, you know, I heard from the fire chief, he said this will increase response times. But in the same breath, before he left, I said, okay, and I can buy into that and I also, but I said, what about four-way stops? That has, that, don't tell me that has, increases response time, because guess what? When a fire truck comes, you stop. If it's at a stop sign or a light, you don't move. All right? So with that said, I'll push, I'll move this one because of, he said it increases response time. And also another issue that I asked Mrs. Cipriani right before she left, because I had more questions, I just didn't get the opportunity to ask them. I said, okay, because we heard from some of the merchants downtown changing these one-ways to two-ways, how would that affect a delivery? You know, a big, say if I owned a restaurant and all of a sudden, where I used to be able to double park or whatever, so she said that all the businesses are fine with this. So I'll take her at her word for now and I'll move this piece. Like I said, I like most of this, but four-ways, I'm just not bending on that.
On the question, I don't find it necessary to, well, I didn't find it necessary to table this as well as the other piece, I think that we should keep it moving and I'll vote to introduce it tonight because we are still doing our due diligence, listening to the public and bringing them in again next week for additional questions and I think that the rationale behind changing the direction of a lot of the streets makes a lot of sense, so I am in favor of this and the, sorry, there's one other thing I was going to go into mention, but can't think of it. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So also on the question, again, it's not my goal to stop this per se, but to give it some time as tonight is the first time the public is hearing this information.
My apologies, the one other point that I did want to make was the sense of urgency behind the use of ARPA dollars for the completion of these projects, that they did say that within less than a year, so September of next year, they need to be utilized by, so that's part of the other reason that I don't want to hold up the process longer or table it and then not see it move back on quickly because of that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think there may be some time with our, how many times we're going to read it, maybe to table it in the future, but as I said, we do have a habit of passing things and then the feedback from the public comes in after the legislation has passed and we didn't cover all of our bases, so that's my goal here is to just cover all of our bases before we move forward.
All right, thank you. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it and so moved.
5D for introduction and ordinance, establishing no parking zones for portions of certain roadways to conform to state regulations and to improve pedestrian safety.
At this time I entertain a motion that I'm 5D being introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I'm not going to continue with the same thing I've done. We'll pass this forward, but there'll be some other opportunities as we move forward to talk about all of this.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5E for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application by the Office of Economic and Community Development of the City of Scranton to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant for up to $198,170 to be used towards the purchase of a modular vehicle barrier trailer system.
At this time I entertain a motion that I'm 5E being introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, this is, I can't say anybody this, no. If we have parades and stuff, this vehicle will actually drop all of the horses and all of that stuff and the barriers for that, so it just makes it a lot easier than having police go back and forth and continue picking them up. So all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 269, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant for the redevelopment assistance capital program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Office of the Budget in the amount of $632,329, accepting and dispersing the grant if the application is successful and coordinate the use of the grant funds for the Lackawanna Avenue streetscape project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'll vote in favor of this tonight as it is to bring money into the city, but some of the pieces of this will be contingent in the passing of those fifth order items.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. Everybody clear, item 7A legally, lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 270, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant for the redevelopment assistance capital program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Office of the Budget in the amount of $2,7,938, accepting and dispersing the grant if the application is successful and coordinate the use of the grant funds for the Naog Waterway Phase Two.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. Everybody clear, item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, no business at this time.
If there is no further business, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.